Good evening. Thank all you for being here tonight. Today is August the fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Our thought for today is happiness is not by chance, but by choice. That's Jim Rodd, Jim Run. I'm gonna go ahead and officially call this meeting to order tonight. I'm gonna ask if Commissioner Mason, you feel like leaving us in our invocation tonight? And while you're doing that, you might as well leave us in our pledge as well. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Let us all bow our heads. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for bringing us back to this place one more time. We thank you for all that you've done for our county. We thank you for all that you are going to do. We bless you, we praise you, we honor you, and lift your name up, God. We ask that as we move forward into this business meeting, God, that you would allow your Spirit to flow amongst us, through us, in us. God, give us the mind, God, give us the unity, to be able to move together and make the decisions for this amazing county, so that it can be all that you've called it to be. God, we thank you for everything that you've done, and we give you all the kingdom honor and the glory. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner, does I seek a motion that we approve the agenda, please? Can I get a s-? It's been a motion by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Mason. Any discussion? All in favor?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a substitute motion to add to the agenda, and to add to the agenda in request for travel to the National Association of Black County Commissioners Convention. I have been asking since July, two thousand twenty-two. Unfortunately, it has been sitting on your desk, Mr. Chairman. I have not heard a response as of yet, and per the travel policy, if there's no response, we can appeal it before the Board of Commissioners. So I would like to add that to the agenda as a discussion item, and allow the Board of Commissioners to determine whether or not I should travel to this convention. It was a substitute motion.
Is that a second, please? Second. It's been a motion and second that we add, what is it you want to add?
Travel discussion to the National Association of Black County Officials Convention. I've been asking for it since July, two thousand twenty-two.
It's been a motion and second that we add this to the agenda, that we amend the agenda and add it to the agenda. All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman, I do ask, is that a no for going to the convention, or just a no just adding it to the agenda?
It's a no to add it to the agenda.
So can you inform me in public when will I receive a response?
Commissioner? Yeah, well, it's a motion on the floor.
Okay.
Thank you. All in favor of approving the agenda, please? Any opposed? It passes three... Well, we do discussion, go ahead.
Yes. Mr. Chairman, can you inform me of when I will receive a response? I have been asking patiently, and I have not received a response as of August fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three. I have sent numerous emails with no responses. I've even sent information, the CEOs of the corporations of the conference have sent information. National Association of Black County Officials is a subsidiary of NACO. So we were informed that we only support NACO and ACCG, and so I've been trying to find out why I have not received a response. We pay for conferences for all other staff, we pay for organizations for all of the staff, even locally, that costs more, and I have not heard a response. I've been patiently waiting. I would have never brought this to the forefront if I would have heard a response.
Oh, you're more than welcome to bring anything you'd like to the forefront, forefront, at any time you please. I'll respond when I get all the information that I need to make a decision.
What is the information that you need? I was, that information actually was forwarded over from my finance director. She forwarded over to you.
When I get the information I need, that I request it, I give you a...
Yeah, what was, that's what I'm asking you, Mr. Chairman, in public, what is the information that you need? Because I never received a response from you on what you needed additionally from us, and it's been over...
When I get the information from NACO, and when I get the information from ACCG, I will give you a response.
It wouldn't come from ACCG, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
So, and I didn't talk over you, I didn't. It didn't co- it's not coming from ACCG, so obviously there's a miscommunication somewhere of what information you may need. That's why I've been asking patiently from you. What is it you need?
Okay. Any more discussion? All in favor? Up, are they agenda? Are they agenda? No, we're doing it now. All in favor? Any opposed? We, we, it's a motion on the floor to approve the agenda. As is, as written. You can vote yes, or you can vote no. I'm gonna call for the motion again. All in favor? Any opposed? Pass three. Thank you. Next on the agenda is citizen comments. This is an opportunity that we allow citizens to make comments about agenda topics only. You have three minutes to do so. Please state your name, your address for the record, please. Agenda topics only. Thank you. Next, the Chairman's report. I just wanna give a quick thank you to all who helped out with the Family Fund Day, all who attended the Family Fund Day. It was a great success. Thank all the ones who donated to make it possible for us to give back to the community. Next, the Chairman, I mean, the County Manager's report. Mr. Cooper?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Distinguished Board Members.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I didn't have it on here, I'm sorry. Ms. Terry James, if you would, please come on up. My apologies. Yes, up under my report.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Mary Terry James, President of Newton County Historic Committee on Black Hairish Preservation. I just want to thank the Board for the ten thousand dollars they gave us for Juneteenth. We was able to do a lot with it, and we really appreciate it. I just wanna say thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Now, Ms. Cooper.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Distinguished Board Members. Today I come to before you all with the August fifteenth County Manager's report. Ninety-seven days in during my tenure here, and our work is predicated on the three P approach. Today, we're gonna focus on processes in relationship to the Senior Home Repair Program. I wanna thank all the concerns that was, all the citizens who raised the concerns at our previous board meeting, as well as the board members for raising the issues on behalf of their constituents in relationship to some of the issues that they had experienced with the Senior Home Repair Program. As a result of that, I think that meeting took place on August first. August second, I wanted to go to our admin building to see, you know, what were some of the issues that the seniors were experiencing, so I had the opportunity to observe, observe some things. But most importantly, I wanted to hold a town hall meeting, and we did just that on August ninth. We had two sessions at Turner Lake Recreation Center, and those two sessions were at nine AM and ten thirty PM as well. We had over two hundred community members participate in the town halls. Since this program has come in inception, some of the issues associated with it were associated with six fundamental questions. What repairs are eligible for the grant? Can I still apply? Will everyone receive the thirty thousand dollar allotment? How long will it take to hear that my application was approved? Why are pictures now required? Why has this process been so difficult? So we tried to explain those issues in its entirety, not only with myself being forefront as one of the facilitators of the session, but also with our iParametric consultant, as well as Ms. Laura Bertram from Newton Family Connection Center. Let's talk about the eligible repairs that we discussed in those town halls, the ten versus nine, if you will. There are ten eligible repairs, nine ineligible repairs. The ten eligible repairs are roofs and gutters, electrical systems, plumbing systems, septic systems, exterior siding, heating and air systems, insulation, window and door replacement, bathroom modifications, and ramps, as necessary as it pertains to our citizens with physical disabilities, as well as further repairs in relationship to our citizens with physical disabilities to ensure that they can meet their basic life functions. In reference to ineligible repairs, the purchase or repair of appliances not permanently attached to the home was one ineligible repair. Off-site infrastructure such as sheds, barns, fences, and bridges. Driveway repairs unless a trip hazard is present. Relocation expenses of the homeowners. Tools and work-related appliances. Cosmetic improvements, interior paint, exterior paint, updating flooring. Elective home repairs, upgrades and renovations. Repairs to any detached structures or outbuildings. Landscaping, lawn sprinkler, walkaways, and fences. The purpose of this home repair program is to ensure that we're meeting the safety needs of our most treasured population, our seniors. Another question, as I mentioned earlier, can seniors still apply, or are we still eligible to reply? The deadline was July thirty-first at three PM. There was a lot of confusion on that day because there were seniors that was already registered coming to the centers, and they felt that they were being turned away. Ms. Bertram did a beautiful job in explaining what happened that day, and as I stated during the last meeting, we take ownership of that miscommunication, and quite frankly, that malfunction of the program. But we explained to them that we were trying to register as many new seniors as possible to meet the deadline. Also, we have until August thirty-first to complete all registered seniors in terms of their application process. Some of the things that, some of the things we're still waiting on is additional documentation, such as the estimates, also photographs and things of that nature. Difficulties, again, this was new to us all, the ARPA funding. It was unique in nature, and there were some highs and lows, some ebbs and flows, as I mentioned previously when talking about this program. There were some technology difficulties, but collectively and working collaboratively, Newton County Government, as well as iParametrics and the Newton Family Connection Center, we've, you know, taken care of those issues, and we're working toward enhancing even more as we continue to complete these application process. Funding allocations, this is a big piece of it because, again, this is funding from the federal government. So who are priorities in reference to seniors? The priorities are those individuals that prioritize annual income limits. For example, if I have a senior making thirty-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars a year, that senior essentially is making twenty-eight hundred dollars a month, and when you break that down into weeks, that's just over seven hundred and three dollars. That's meager wages in these days and times. So an individual with that type of income would definitely be priority in reference to this program. Let's take a senior who has a household of eight, at sixty-three thousand, six hundred and five hundred is their annual income. Well, that's just about fifty-three hundred dollars a month, and when you break that down on a weekly basis, that's just over thirteen hundred dollars, right? But thirteen hundred dollars for eight people in a home, that's still scarce. So the funding, I wanna thank this board again for allowing us to raise the funding to five million dollars. But when you look at it through the lens of the potential of helping as many seniors as possible, let's say we take thirteen hundred seniors, and all of their applications are approved, and, for example, all of their applications and their quotes are at thirty thousand dollars, we're still short by thirty-four million dollars, because that would be a cost of thirty-nine million dollars. So realistically, when we look at the applicants that we have in the queue right now, and if we awarded the full maximum allotment of thirty thousand dollars, we'll be able to help about a hundred and sixty-six seniors. So again, we're trying to prioritize based on needs, and we're also trying to be fiscally responsible with the limited resources. Photography requirement. Again, we're dealing with federal funding, so we must make sure our I's are dotted and our T's are crossed, and we're buttoned up as a program. So the Board of Commissioners voted in agreement to have pictures as a mandate for this grant, and that was voted on July eighteen. But what that does too, that helps us from an auditing perspective, and it makes sure that this process has been looked at and is efficient in reference to ensuring that, hey, when we approve a senior for this opportunity, you know, we have checked all the boxes. Now, it had been some trying times initially with the seniors, and whether or not they'll be responsible for the picture-taking, but the one thing that we were able to work out, we had a meeting with contractors who were interested in the program, and we encouraged them to take the before and after pictures on our behalf. So, you know, since we had that meeting, things have improved. Let's look at real-time data snapshots, and let's look at what a registered senior means. It basically means that that individual has started the process, but there may be additional documentation needed. They may have some missing items, they may need some quotes, they may need additional pictures, so on and so forth. Real-time data as of today, we have one thousand, three hundred and twenty-one registered seniors. When you look at the applicants that have completed applications, we have seven hundred and sixteen completed applications. We've approved thirty-five, we've denied thirty-five, and we have two that are in the process of receiving an appeals review. The appeal process, right, we want everybody to have due process in association with this opportunity. So as a result of that, we created an appeals team. Once you've received a denial letter, you can then respond by written email communication or by word document that you would like your appeal or your file to be reviewed. The review committee consists of the County Manager, our legal team, iParametrics, and a community member. The panel has twenty-one days to render a decision. If overturned, the applicant retains their place in the queue. So if I Harold Cooper Senior applied June fifth and was denied, and then went and won my appeal, I still don't lose my place in line as a June fifth applicant, and that's very important. Contractor payments. Once a senior has their grant request approved, and the contractor has accepted the project, fifty percent of the total is paid directly to the contractor. At the conclusion of the work, seniors are asked to confirm that the work has been completed. A form will then trigger an inspection by our county staff, and this inspection is rated as complete or incomplete. Inspections with photographs showing the scope of the work must be submitted by county staff and iParametrics, and when the inspection is completed, the remaining fifty percent is made available for pickup on Fridays, typically afternoon, from the finance department. However, if a contractor would like their payment mailed to them, we will mail upon request. Also, before I end, I want to talk about another program really briefly, and that is our youth commission. We had the opportunity to do our second commission meeting on yesterday. It was the start of Module One, and I'd be remiss if I didn't say and give respect to those outstanding youth that participated last night. I'd be remiss if I didn't give our staff members, Brian, Waka, Laney, and Addison, their just due, and I wanna also extend a special thanks to Commissioner Sanders for being a interested party and watching the process in its entirety on yesterday evening. The youth really have a lot to say, and they're really engaged and excited about Newton County and this community. I yield back my time at this moment.
Thank you, sir. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. I seek a motion that we approve the consent agenda, please? No move. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been motion by Commissioner Mason and second by Commissioner Edwards. Any discussion? All in favor? It passes five oh. Thank you. Ms. Ham.
Mr. Chair, the next item on the agenda are the items for discussion and consideration, starting with item number ten, Parks and Recreation, being presented by Mr. Dwayne Mask and Jeff Prine. They're requesting approval to use Omni Partnership Co-op as our method to receive quotes from two prominent sports turf vendors. Also, number two is to contract with Sports Turf Company to perform design build, to develop a comprehensive approach and guarantee maximum price to relocate fields.
It's Brian.
Good evening. As part of the SPOLOX twenty-three countywide parks and recreation improvements, we're looking at making improvements to the turf systems out at the City Pond Park and also at Turner Lake. This particular company is a sports turf company that represents AstroTurf, so the intent is at Turner Lake that the infield, which are dirt today, would be converted over to synthetic, and at, and then at, at City Pond Park, we would have a mixture of fields that were being, the infield and outfield, converted over. Obviously, it's a lot less maintenance, and it allows the Parks and Rec Department to have operations on a much more ongoing basis. The Omni Partnership is a co-op program, national co-op program. It allows us to go directly out to manufacture, manufactured systems such as sports turf, and work directly with them. It's a cost savings measure because we can get a better buying opportunity because we're using national rates versus local rates. This is a design-build-turnkey approach. This is part one of the preconstruction and design. The, the nearest, the other company, which was field turf, came in at a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars, so obviously, the sports turf is a much better option for us. So we're asking you to authorize us to move into that contract with them, and we'll be coming back to you with a guaranteed maximum price later on this year.
Thank you, sir. And this is budgeted, right?
Absolutely, yes, sir.
Thank you. I seek a motion, please? Can I get a second? It's been a motion by Commissioner Henderson and second by Commissioner Mason. Any discussion? All in favor? It passes five oh. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chair, the next item on the agenda is going to be presented by Mr. Scott Sorokin on number eleven. GIS is requesting approval of a small government enterprise agreement between Newton County and Environmental Systems Research for geographic, or I should say for our GIS software. The contract amount, three hundred, thirty-nine thousand, nine hundred dollars over three years, or one thirteen, three hundred annually, shared cost between Newton County, Newton County Water and Sewer, as well as the City of Covington, and it is budgeted.
Thank you, Scott.
Good evening. This contract is between the county and a company called Esri, which provides our GIS software. We've been using Esri software for nearly twenty-five years, basically as long as we've had a GIS department. For the last twelve years, we've been entering into three-years agreement, three-year agreements, just like the one that's before you tonight. We partner with the City of Covington and the Water and Sewer Authority. By doing that, we achieve lower costs than if we each had our own individual contract. As Latonya said, well, let me back up. This is very substantially similar to the three-year agreement that just expired with the notable costs, the exception of the cost, which did unfortunately go up. It's based on population, and for entities that provide utility services, it's based on how many customers they have. So when we look at the county's population, city customers, Water and Sewer Authority customers, just the amount of growth we've had in the last three years, that did push us to a new threshold, and so we do have a cost of a hundred and thirteen thousand, three hundred dollars for each of the three years, but that will be split evenly, a third, a third, a third, between us, the city, and the water authority. So our obligation is about thirty-seven thousand, six hundred dollars each year that is budgeted for this year. Basically, approval of this contract would allow us to continue operating as we have been.
Thank you, sir. I seek a motion, please. Can I get a second? It's been a motion by Commissioner Mason and second by Commissioner Cowan. Any discussion? All in favor? It passes five oh.
Mr. Chair, we have one more item that Mr. Sorokin's gonna present, which is also requesting approval of the Memorandum of Understanding, or the MOU, between Newton County and the City of Covington regarding management of a small government enterprise agreement with Information, excuse me, Environmental Systems Research Institute for the GIS software.
Thank you. The contract that you just approved designates the county as kind of the lead entity among the three, so we're basically the point of contact for anything regarding the contract, and one of the stipulations in the contract is the county can make an amendment without the city or the water authority having to approve it. The city had concerns about that, that the county could obligate them to additional costs without them having any say, which was an understandable concern. So this MOU, one of the things it does is provide that before the county sought to make any amendments, we would make sure the city was in agreement with that. The other main thing it does is it designates the county as the administrator of any shared resources, like the cloud platform that we use to share data and maps with the public. We'll do the administration of that, even the city and the water authority also use that platform, but we would be the administrator, which is what we've been doing for several years, and it's worked very well.
Thank you, sir. I seek a motion, please? Can I get a second? It's been a motion by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Cowan. Any discussion? Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, has, has legal had a chance? I mean, we're, we're good with this agreement?
Yes, we have our office, we have reviewed it, and it's been approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thanks, Scott.
Any more discussion? All in favor? It passes five oh. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, the next item on the agenda is item number thirteen, being presented by Ms. Brittany White and our County Manager, Mr. Cooper. Piedmont Newton Hospital Agreement. The purpose is for the ten new inpatient beds. The cost is two million, two hundred, and this has been budgeted and discussed previously.
Thank you. Tonight, we are seeking approval for an agreement between Newton County and Piedmont Newton Hospital. So earlier this year, Piedmont Newton came to the county asking for two-point-two million in funding. On the June twentieth meeting, you did approve the funding, so this is just the agreement to correspond with the approval of the funding. So this is for ten inpatient beds. So the funding source will be one-point-one million in ARPA funds, one-point-one million in general funds. This was drafted by our legal team and also reviewed by Piedmont Newton's legal team.
Thank you, ma'am. I seek a motion, please?
No move. That's stated by the County Finance Director.
Can I get a second? It's been a motion by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Mason. Any discussion? Or Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you. I had the opportunity to go to the hospital, not visiting, but I was kinda over, over there visiting, visiting some people that I knew, and I, I think there would be a welcome added addition to the hospital, to the... And I think there would be a welcome added addition to the hospital, to the service of people in Newton County.
Any discussion? All in favor? It passes five oh. Thank you so much.
Mr. Chair, we're at item number fourteen, Nelson Heights Community Center update.
Mr. Cooper.
I know that this board had mandates for Nelson Heights in terms of the auditing process. And I understand that Mr. Henderson is here now, so if he wants to provide an update, he can.
Yes, sir. Good evening, guys. How you guys doing?
Good evening.
So have you guys received our procedures packet yet? Have everyone received a copy? Our purpose, so I'm here today to present, give you guys a summary of our procedures, of things we came up and adjusted. So what I plan to do is kind of touch bases on some things that we're already operating on, also to touch bases on things that we actually changed on it. So do you guys have any questions?
Commissioner, if I may, thank you. I noticed, and it was brought to my attention, that in the back of the booklet, it was by the counter, let me get that big old briefie pocketbook. Well, nothing happened. It was brought to my attention by the counter attorney, was that the signing in this document right here, that I had the ability to sign, and I explained to her, there was a misprint, I guess, on Denise Broward Port, because my name was taken off the Secretary of State's list of people for Nelson Heights. I just want to bring that attention. And I would ask that if the board see fit to approve what you're trying to do, which is what I think is right, that my name on this document would be deleted. Because I do not sign any checks. I'm not even on the same board that I created as a commissioner years ago and haven't been a part of it for the last five years. So we just wanted to clear it up from the very, the very beginning, so that we know that.
Got you. Yeah, so I'll touch base on that as well. I am the CEO, so definitely I'll sign all the checks and kind of see all the county information. So I'll start off with contract checks and loans. So contracts and other writings, except as otherwise provided by a resolution of the board or board policy. All contracts, deeds, leases, mortgages, grants, and other agreements of the corporation shall be executed on its behalf by the treasury or other person to whom the corporation has delegated authority to execute such documents in accordance with policies approved by the board. Checks and draws, all checks, draws, or other orders for payment of money, notes, or other evidence of indebtedness issued in the name of the corporation shall be signed by such officer or officer agents or agents of the corporation in such manner as shall from time to time be determined by the resolution of the board. For all our deposits, all funds of the corporation not otherwise employed shall be deposited from time to time to the credit of the corporation in such banks, trust companies, and other depository as the board and designated committee of the board may select. Guys, we'll turn to page number three. This is all miscellaneous information. I'll touch on books and records. The corporation shall keep correct and complete books and records of account and shall keep minutes of proceedings of all meetings of its board directors, a record of all actions taken by board or directors without a meeting, and a record of all actions taken by committees of the board. In addition, the corporation should keep a copy of the corporation's articles of incorporation and bylaws amended to date. We'll drop down to the bylaw amendment. These bylaws may be amended, altered, repealed, or restated by a vote of the majority of the board of directors then in office at a meeting of the board, provided however that no amendment shall be made by these bylaws, which would cause the corporation to cease to qualify as an exempt corporation under section five oh one C three of the Internal Revenue Code of nineteen eighty-six or the corresponding section of any future federal tax code, and that an amendment does not affect the voting rights of directors. An amendment that does affect the voting rights of directors further requires ratification by two-thirds vote of a quorum or directors at a board meeting. That all amendments be consistent with the articles of incorporation. So we'll skip to page, page six, and we'll start with transparency and accountability, disclosure of financial information to the general public. By making full accurate information about its missions, activities, finances, and governance publicly available, Nelson Heights Community Services, Inc., practices, and encourage transparency and accountability to the general public. This policy will indicate which documents and materials produced by the corporation are open to staff and or public. Indicate which documents or matters produced by the corporation are closed to staff and or public. Specify the procedures whereby the open-close status of documents and materials can be altered. The details of this policy are followed. Financial and IRS documents, the Form ten twenty-three and the Form nine ninety. Nelson Heights Community Services, Inc. shall provide its internal revenue forms nine ninety, nine ninety-two, ten twenty-three, fifty-two twenty-seven bylaws, conflict and interest policies, and financial statements to the general public for inspection for a charge. So I'll start right there. Do you guys have any questions so far? Good, right, perfect. So guys, we'll turn to page, page nine, and it talks about the board commission duties and responsibilities. So the board's purpose is to oversee the organization and to monitor actions by the CEO, CEO or operation manager who is hired by the board to implement and conduct business for the nonprofit. The bylaws contains board information of this general responsibilities, appointment, support, and monitoring the executive staff, clarify the mission of the organization, approve long-term plans, oversee operation, ensure financial stability, assess board performance, oversees the administration and monitoring of the grants, conduct regular meetings. The fiduciary responsibilities will be review audit of financial records annually by the independent accountant, create a budget, approval and ongoing monitoring, review of financial statements on a regular basis, monthly and quarterly, create a system which is conducive to sound day-to-day financial management of the organization, including good internal controls. So also, the requirements of the federal local grants programs are met and completed. So we'll go to page eleven. We'll touch on our diversity policy. The nonprofit will not discriminate against anyone based on race, religion, gender, sexual preference of any category. When hiring, our goal is to be diverse in our practices, yet to hire the most highly skilled or highly educated candidate for the position. And selecting board members, the same discrimination policy will be in effect. It is our goal to enjoy the contribution in terms of skill, intelligence, people from all types of backgrounds. So we'll move to page, page seventeen. Talks about cash disbursements and expense allocations. So for cash disbursements are generally made for payments to vendors for goods and services, taxes, license fees, staff training and development, memberships and subscriptions, meeting expenses, employee reimbursements, marketing promotional materials. Checks are processed weekly. Invoices submitted to the operation manager by Wednesday will be processed and paid by Friday of the same week. Checks can be prepared manually within one day, but this should be limited to emergency situations. Requests for cash disbursements are submitted to according in three ways. Number one, the original invoice. Number two, the purchase request. Also, number three, the employee expense report or reimbursement requests. After that, we'll turn to page nineteen. Really, no, this touch on the credit card policy and charges. All staff members who are authorized to carry an organization credit card will be held personally responsible in event that any charge is deemed personal or unauthorized. Unauthorized use of the credit card includes personal expenditures of any kind, expenditures which have not been properly authorized, meals, entertainment, gifts, or any other expenditures which are prohibited by the budget laws, regulations, and entities from which Nelson Heights Community Services, Inc. receives funds.
Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you. And I understand the policy and I kind of looked at it briefly and I guess didn't look at it good enough to see my names at the back end of it. But the question I want that I'm going to ask, who was the last time that the county has appropriated money, funding for Nelson Heights?
I don't know off the top of my head, but I'm thinking two years, maybe two years, coming two years now.
I know, I know personally, because I have to kind of deal with it. The whole last budget cycle, July, July, the last budget cycle, I know Nelson Heights didn't receive any money. So how was, who was paying the utility bill up until the last two months, I think? Who was paying the utility bills and all the rest of the bill at Nelson Heights?
Were really off donations and just rental of the facility.
So it was somewhat taking care of itself. It's my understanding that in most nonprofits are supposed to make available to the public services, like for us, after school tutoring, if somebody, you know, whatever, you know, stuff in the community. And I know the original intent was for Nelson Heights, since the change to the board of commissioner by our previous board, was to buy fans and do stuff in the community as needed by the community. And it's, but my, just what I'm saying, but for the last year, there's been no fund for no, no kind of programming or to pay the director that we have. And when she was paid, it was from donations and rentals. So I understand what you're saying. It's all good. And I appreciate, you know, what y'all, we got Ms. Brewer, Denise, and she, you know, the policy that she written up for what the board wanted. But it's, there's no funding. In fact, it's my understanding, there's no funding even for Washington Street. Even they did give them some money prior to and they cut it off. But there's no funding for any area in Newton County, in the underserved areas that is needed. And I'm just going to say this, I'm going to kind of close on this and maybe ask you a question later on. But one of the things I learned in being in the community, not be in the community, I almost immersed in this Commissioner Sanders. And I know that the kids are failing in reading. I mean, that's common. Nobody, you can't buy, you can't hire a teacher to help the children with reading, after school tutoring programs. We know that they are failing in math. And you can talk to anybody, I think, I talked to a couple of judges. And there's no help at all. And so if there's a problem with education, keeping the kids back, how you hold somebody back? It's by not giving them an education. And so I think we need to kind of work together to help these kids to get an education, help them be have better reading skills, to help them count money. Because we don't need a whole lot of people who are undereducated. Need people who are educated to make this community in our county better. And I don't think we're doing a good job.
Continue on. So guys, I have one last question. So I guess just to clarify, since, when was the last time Nelson Heights was given, other than paying a utility bill for the last two months, was given any appropriations? The question goes to Mr. Cooper and Ms. Brittany.
Brittany, could you come and share?
I believe the last payment made directly to Nelson Heights would have been at the end of budget year FY twenty-two, so probably roughly June twenty twenty-two. We did pay around seven thousand dollars of operational costs when the board made the motion to pay their operational costs for sixty days. So that came out to around seven thousand and some odd dollars.
If I may ask, how much was left? Other words, in the budget, if we were allocated forty thousand dollars, if you subtract seven thousand dollars from that, we leave a how much?
Around thirty-three thousand.
Thirty-three thousand dollars. So thirty-three thousand dollars was kept from making programs for the kids, to hire some, to hire a teacher, to help them with their reading, help them with math in the afternoon, hopefully to make them and their family lives a little bit better and for them in the future. And so what's to become of that money if, I mean, what I'm saying is, if the board approves, it's up to the board. I understand that. If it's approved, does Nelson Heights get the remaining money plus a allocation every, every month for this new budget that we're in? I mean, I'm just trying to figure out how that works.
Well, we, we only have the FY twenty-three budget remaining open for another two weeks. So after the next two weeks, FY twenty-three funds are closed, so.
Funds will be just taken away from it, even though there was a, there was a hole on it for a whole, just about a whole year. Taken away from the kids, to hire a teacher, to go out and get somebody to help these kids, to pay the director, to help those kids. And the money that was raised were going to pay a utility bill that was not, Nelson Heights Community Services utility bill, it was Newton County's utility bill. Because the county is supposed to pay, like we do it for everybody else, is supposed to pay the light bill, pay for some security and stuff instead of, but I think CEO Henderson was signing the checks to pay those bills that were basically the county responsible for. And, you know, and so I just, it's just kind of sad to me to know that you want to help your kids in the community and we can't do it. The reason why you can't do it, because fun was hell. You know, I understand, and I'm not going to old stuff, that I believe we're here for the wrong reasons. It should have been something better. We should have went out, as Commissioner Cowan has said, said, we don't want to just stop it over there. We want to try to make sure that those services for those kids need to be given to them so we can make, have those services for the kids. And I'm going to just say it with this, you don't have to do anything for the kids. You can cut off Nelson Heights, you can cut off Washington Street, all of them. But I tell you, it's going to be more shootings and more killing just over the Hogsland project. What it took away from me, from where I would go over and mentor the kids, talk to the kids, talk to the families, and then you got nobody over there. And it's a whole lot of stuff going on. And so one day, it could be some of your kinfolk, it could be some of your friends.
Commissioner Sanders.
I just have, well, I have a few questions, but when was the last time Washington Street received their funding?
I think it was March twenty twenty-three.
And is there a remaining balance for them as well?
Yes.
So my question is going to be also to our county manager and to the board. If these entities have come back with what they have needed, why is funding being held from the two only African-American nonprofits that we appropriate? And I'm going to put it out there. Why is all the fundings are being held for the two? Now, they've done what they need to do based on what the board is needing. And Brittany just stated, in two weeks, that money is going to be closed. So you have two of the organizations that cater to the underserved community who have not received appropriation from the county to serve the underserved children. That is a problem for me. Whether they're white, black, or whomever, it's a problem. But you're looking at the two African-American organizations that are not receiving appropriation. And as we came across from this last time, the items that were looked at that were, I guess negligent, were minor, minute. Even Commissioner Cowan even said that same thing. It was stuff that was very basic. And we're trying to figure out why we are not taking care of. I've been to both of the entities over the summer and I saw the kids and I saw the programs. I don't know if anybody else have visited, but I have. I go out. When I hear certain things, I actually go out to the properties, go see for myself, to see what's going on. And I make a decision based on myself, not on hearsay. And so I've seen the work they put in over And so I've seen the work they put in over the summer, so I'm trying to understand why are we holding them funding back from these organizations when we have not audited any other nonprofit that we appropriate and we should be doing that? Cause there's some questions on some of the other nonprofits that we appropriate funds to.
Commissioner Mason.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, um, I just wanna get back to the topic at hand. Um, item number fourteen says Nelson Heights Community Center update. Um, and so I wanna ensure that that's what we're talking about today. Uh, if there are any other entities that we need to discuss, um, I think what we need to do is make sure that those items or those nonprofits are actually on the agenda so that we can discuss those specific items, but today, um, I would love to have a conversation about Nelson Heights Community Center update without, uh, engaging any other nonprofit organizations. Uh, so, I have some questions. Um, on, and, and thank you, um, Mr. Henderson for providing this and for reading this information. Um, I, I, I see here where you, uh, mentioned the, the board and the commission duties and responsibilities. Do we have, and I don't know if our county manager, if our finance director, do we have a list-
The board members?
Of those board members?
Yes, sir.
Uh, I submitted it last fiscal, you guys requested. Turns out that, uh-
Cause I don't think, I don't know if we've ever received a list of the board members, because I know big in appropriation, that is one of the criteria.
Exactly.
Uh, is so that the Board of Commissions would have a list of those board members and I don't know who they are.
Right, so I did provide it, um, for the other appropriation, the board members recently.
Do you mind stating those names for the record?
Yes, sir, well, what I can do is, I'll, I'll get the, I'll get it back to you guys and, um, I can present it.
You know who they are?
Yes, sir.
Do you mind stating their names so that we can have it on public record?
All right, one minute, sir. All right, so first, I am the CEO, which I'm a board member myself. Um, next you have Sandy Henderson, all right, then you have Thelma Starr, then you have Jaquan Henderson, who's the next one, and the following we have Corporate Thomas, which is, um, Alicia Thomas.
Thank you. Um, so that brings up another point. Um, you, you wrote in this document, a conflict of interest, have you read that? Um, it sounds like, are those all family members to you?
Yeah, but how would it be a conflict of interest as far as with county funding?
Well, now, it, now it has been brought out, are the board members actually receiving a monthly stipend for attending the board meeting?
No, sir.
Okay, okay, great, so, uh, just to clarify that, now, I, I think what we really wanna know at hand is, and what the board asked the last time that you were here, there were some discrepancies in the audit, uh, and so we have not received, I know I haven't personally received, uh, we have requested that those discrepancies be explained or taken care of. And so, I don't see anywhere in this procedural document-
You sure you don't?
That actually addresses the discrepancies that were in the actual audit.
So what concerns were in the audit that you-
All of the discrepancies-
This covers all standard procedure from financing, board, and operation.
Right, it tells us how you will handle those going forward, but it doesn't tell us how you've addressed those discrepancies from the past, from the audit. So I think that's what this board needs to know. How did you all rectify or resolve those issues from what was on the audit?
Right, so what was actually explained earlier, that everything that was brought up in the audit was very minor. Ten ninety forms, receipts, we have worked with the accountant to get all the things in places and, and ask you back to her. So tho- those are things that, that was really, you know, in the audit?
Well, they weren't minor. I, I think that is a, that is a, uh, per your judgment, but this board doesn't consider any of those discrepancies as being minor. Uh, any type of discrepancy is a major issue, it is a major concern when you're dealing with county money. Now, this board has basically stated and been very, very clear, uh, that any type of monies that go out, we wanna make sure that we're being good stewards of those monies. Um, and so if there is any discrepancies, none of them are minor, they are always major, and we wanna make sure that if this board is allowing funds to go to any nonprofit or to any organization, we are making sure that those monies are being stewarded appropriately. Now, I remember one of them, where there was a double check number, uh, that's not minor.
Well, guess what?
That's major, so how did, how was that explained or resolved?
Well, guess what, a, a double check, I don't write checks, right? So they, but they have to give you the check, right? So check numbers, so it must've been a bank issue, I sign checks.
But if you signed the check, you can, you're able to see the number on the top, correct? So were you not unable to see that you, there was a duplicate number on a check that was signed?
Well, I don't look at the number, I sign it. If, if the bank gave me a, a cashier check and into order, I sign according to which one I receive. So if, if there was a double check, it must be on the calendar or the audit, um, I guess an error on him. Like I said, I don't create check numbers, once I receive the checks, I sign them according to what the job has been done and what, what we allow them to do.
Sure, and I'm not saying that you create the check number.
A question for you, was there, was there any-
Actually, I, I'm asking the questions, thank you.
I mean, I wanna ask you a question as well.
Hey, 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 hey.
This is my time to ask questions.
Hold, hold, hold on.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, I, I got this, I got this, I got this.
So, uh-
I got this. So, what we gonna do, he's gonna ask a question, you got the opportunity to respond. If you wanna ask him a question, he got the opportunity to respond. But we're gonna do it respectfully, okay?
Yeah, I, I was not disrespectful, I said a question for you.
No, I'm, we're not gonna talk over each other. If he got a question, let him ask it, you got a question, we're gonna let you ask.
So I get, that's my question, um, how did you, were you unable to see that it was a duplicate number on the actual check that you signed yourself to actually pay for whatever it may be? Because I know i- if I write a check, I'm looking at the check number itself, uh, and generally there's a carbon copy behind that check, so I can see what that number is, so that for me, from an accounting place, I know exactly what I'm doing and I'm doing it, uh, right. So I guess I'm just trying to figure out, how was that resolved? What was the explanation behind that?
Well, once again, sir, um, I'm not accounting, right? So when I get checks and I see the checks, I sign them according to what the job is asked to request of. So what I'm, once again, I'm not sure all the double check was, guess, or whatever presented, but it was, it was an error, had to have been an error on the, on the actual auditor, not myself.
Uh, so I guess, with that being said, and thank you for your explanation, um, and I guess our county manager or our finance director, I think this board would like to see, um, uh, all the discrepancies that were on, we need to see how they, because I thought that's what this was gonna be about, to come back before this board, cause that's what we asked for.
Mm-hmm.
An explanation of all those discrepancies and we got a procedures manual versus how those discrepancies were, have been corrected.
Based on my understanding from the last meeting that I was attended, was to bring back your standard operational procedures and prove as far what you guys were doing before. That's, that, that will, that wa- what was told to me, so it must be a mi- mi- miscommunication.
Uh, yeah, I think there was, because-
And it wasn't you, it was actually Mr. Cowan who's mentioned, what about it? He was, he was quiet last meeting.
Okay, cause I remember it actually being what we were asking for, an explanation of those discrepancies.
Well, now I have that now from you, right? Yes, I, I don't mi- I don't mind doing that.
Well, I mean, there were several, we discussed one.
Mm-hmm, well, like I said-
There were several discrepancies, so we, I don't know, has anyone received, I don't know, have, have you received an explanation of those discrepancies or our county manager?
I, I received the policy.
Okay, so you just received a policy, okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair, that's all I have, thank you.
Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman, Councilman Henderson, so this, the document I have here, it says Nelson Heights Community Services Inc. Procedures Effective June one, twenty twenty-three. So this has been, this document's actually been in existence for a minimum of a couple of, two and a, a month, two and a half months, correct? So, um, and then I believe, I couldn't hear real well, but I believe I heard Commissioner Henderson remove himself from page thirteen, is that right? Is that, is that what we were doing? Okay, so we've had a, we've got a document, this, and it's been in existence for two and a half months, and I, the first thing I read is the following is a list of personnel who have fiscal and accounting responsibilities for Nelson Heights Community S- Services Inc., Anthony Henderson and J.C. Henderson. I see that as a conflict of interest, and apparently Commissioner Henderson did too, cause the first thing he did was remove his name from this document that was communicated to us yesterday or today. And it's been in existence for a minimum of two and a half months, I, I don't understand, so, so we've got a document and processes in, and these are processes in place, and Commissioner Henderson until thirty minutes ago was a, a person in charge of accounting and fiscal responsibilities for this organization.
Well, h- h- do this for me, go to the Secretary of State office site, where you know where the actual, you see the Chief Officer, CEO, board members, that's on there. You will not see J.C. Henderson. So that's, that's on state. This is paper.
I, I just don't understand why he was on there up until thirty minutes ago, he must have realized he had a conflict. Uh, that's a rhetorical-
Hey, guys, now, now-
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Anthony.
Thank you. Um, Commissioner Sanders and then Commissioner Cowan.
Thank you so much, um, first it's cor- just a correction to Commissioner Edwards, the county attorney actually saw it and told Commissioner Henderson, so we wanna straighten that out. The reason why, and furthermore, let me state this, Elena Sanders speaks for Elena Sanders, I don't need any other commissioner or anybody speaking for me. Secondly, another organization was brought up because the same thing is happening to another organization. As we sit here, as we sit here, I didn't speak over you, Commissioner Mason, I didn't say anything while you were talking.
Guys, come on, come on, man.
So as we sit here, as we sit here, and go back and forth like we're in court with a entity, and we have never done this or audited any other entity that we provide appropriation. Not one, but these two. That's discriminatory, whether you see it or not. We have never audited any other entity that we provide appropriation to but those. And if you have, send me the list and I would love to see it. Send me the list and I would love to see those audits. We have not audited any other and see how they're spending funding, and you had residents and many people who have come to us questioning how funds are being spit, but spent by some of the people that we appropriate. And I brought it to the attention, and not once have we audited those nonprofits. Now, we were told by very, when we, when he, the commissioner, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Hen- Councilman Henderson came up to us, we were told that he had to bring back certain things, and he is right. Now, if there's any additional items that we need as a board, then we tell them versus putting them in the court. That's not how we do various things, that's not how I, I, I believe we should be doing it that way. It seemed like it was set up to be a front, to put somebody on Front Street. And that's how it was done, and that's what it looks like where we sitting here. Now, if there's something that is wrong, you give a list to that person, if you want them to bring something back, you give them an itemized list and tell them, this is what we need brought back before the board. And if, so there can be no miscommunication, not, I want you to bring these beings back, put it in black and white and have them bring it back before the board, versus trying to make it look like you're an attorney addressing a defendant or playing in the court with no license, thank you.
Commissioner-
God, come on. God, listen. Uh, Commissioner Cowan.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
I went to school there.
Um, Anthony, thank you for coming today.
Hold on, listen.
I know it's a lot of headache to deal with those sometimes. But, um, let me ask you a few questions, you've got an organized board, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and you got people and y'all meet? Y'all keep up with the minutes and everything? Okay. Um, how many signatures do you require on a check?
My, just my signature.
Okay, I'm gonna make a suggestion that you get two signatures on a check. Okay, that avoids anybody having a question of impropriety.
Well, here's the thing, yeah, I agree with that, but if it only see a thousand dollars, it's just the easiest sign for me, anything gets seated in that, then we'll get two signatures.
Is that in your policy?
Yes, sir, you sit down here.
Okay, I suggest that anything have two signatures on it.
I can change that for you.
That's just my period of it. Uh, financial reports, you need a system where you can do cash in, cash out. Okay, money coming in-
Mm-hmm.
And then money going out. Now, I suggest you buy some software called QuickBooks. It's a very easy, uh, system to use. Brittany may know about it, I'm more so than I do. I used to use it in my law practice years ago, but, um, um, you can keep up with invoices and money coming in, cause right now, if everything's perfect, you get a big amount of money put aside and then it's just all checks out.
Yes, sir.
Cause there's not, there's not income coming out.
Right.
Or going in all the time. Um, who's the operations manager, is that you?
Yeah, myself, yes, sir.
Okay. Now, that's something you may wanna work on with Brittany.
Mm-hmm.
Get that software. You put it on any computer and it'll work. Let's see. As far as the money goes, uh, that was, that J.C. had a question about, uh, that's an easy fix. Uh, Brittany, I, I think y'all can do a, y'all can do an escrow account, set it aside.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, allow, allow capital dispersments out of there. Um, could you do that, Brittany?
The board approval.
Okay. All right, um, see, I think we're arguing about things that really don't matter. Uh, um, I think it's, I think it's an easy fix. And, and, and we wanna make sure everything's right, you know, when you turn in a profit and loss report, which is the same thing as an audit report.
Right.
Which is not, this just comes off your computer. You just hit, uh, QuickBooks and punch the button and it prints it out.
Mm-hmm.
It keeps you, keeps up with all your checks, all your money coming in, and, uh, it's fairly easy to fix, I mean, we can. Um, I'm, I'm just giving you some suggestions, cause quite frankly, I'm tired of hearing about Nelson Heights. And, uh, I think it's, uh, possible to, to fix all this.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, you're, you're a smart man and I know that you, uh, know how to do this, probably better than I do. Um, now, taking J.C. off the reports, that's the best thing to do, because that's a conflict of interest. He can't sit up here and vote and then have input on the, on the, uh, decision making. Um, but I think it's fairly easy to do, but you've got to satisfy Brittany and Harold with a report that shows your, um, income in and money going out.
Mm-hmm.
And then know what exactly what your balance is, and that balance should match up to your checkbook.
Right, yes, sir.
So, I think it's an easy fix, I just think, I don't think anybody's really thinking it through, how we can do it. Um, and if I had time, I'd do it for you, but I don't. Um, but I think you're smart enough to know what to get, it's called QuickBooks, and it costs about three hundred and fifty dollars to get that.
Uh-huh.
And you get a profit and loss statement, you could get enough information to give to Harold and Brittany and they can look at it.
Right.
And, and two, I think you need to do, what QuickBooks does is, um, print yourself an invoice system.
Mm-hmm.
So if somebody comes to you and said, hey, I've got, uh, uh, expenses for the building here.
Mm-hmm.
And you just say, well, here, fill out this invoice, uh, whatever it's gonna be, request, and then you load that in and QuickBooks adds it up and you're done with it. Um, is that reasonable?
It is, yeah, Asher, right now, the partner who we used, um, do, that does all our taxes- It is, yeah. Actually, right now, the partner who we used, um, that does all our taxes, she actually, we have a QuickBook account already set up, so she have access to all our accounts.
Okay.
So everything that's come in, expense, or input wise, it goes through that, and she prints it off.
Is that, uh, Mike Mason's group?
Yes, sir. Mm-hmm. So we already have that in place. It's just more so.
Well, tell him, tell him what you, what we've recommended that.
Yes, sir.
We do this, and, um, I think we can avoid these problems in the future.
Yes, sir.
Down the road. Um, but you can't, you can't go with situations where there's checks that are written that are not clear.
Right.
Can't be no checks written for personal stuff.
You never find that to me.
I know that. I didn't say that, but I'm just saying, um, no checks for personal stuff, no checks for, uh, no expenditures for, um, things that are not related to Nelson Heights.
Yes, sir.
So, that's my advice.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you. I, I think, I, you know, I believe there's, there's, there's some good advice. And, you know, it's good. But I just wanted to say one thing about my name. I didn't even know my name was on that document until the county attorney stopped me. I think some of y'all was here, and she came outside, and was doing the pla- I mean, doing the prayer, Commissioner Mason. And she was telling about, she says, no, she said, your name is on it. And I said, well, if it is, it's not supposed to be on there. I think she, she, she would tell you that I did the same thing. So there was something that was, uh, a misprint, and there was a document generated from the, uh, from the county. Because we had gave it, um, to Ms. Jackie. She put it in the computer, and I asked that, she pulled it off so we could get a commissioner's copy. Moreover, she had also gave, um, our finance director a copy of it months ago for a look at, and someone would give, uh, give me or give us an opinion of what we need to do. Now, Mason, we've been had them ever since when I was on the board. We had them. And they were directing us, and that's what they continue to do. So when I already stopped, uh, C E O Henderson went to us and said, well, this is what they said they want us to do. This is a document that she gave us. This was the one that most every commissioner got. There was an intention, and I, and I don't think, you know, there's been a lot of misprints. Um, but I don't think it's a conflict of interest, just because somebody put my name on it, and it wasn't supposed to be. Now, if it was on the Secret, Secretary of State website, my name was on it. Then you could say that, and I think, uh, in attorney or in attorney, we know that. And it's not, because, um, the auditor went through it. And I just want to add one other thing. Mr. Sanchez, the auditor, was not somebody that we hired. We didn't hire him. There was something that generated by the Board of Commissioners, and I wanted, this document, I took, brought it here. This document states that it was hired by Tewin County, and he's the one that ordered. Everybody else got whoever they wanted, but they hired him for us. And the check with two, I looked at that one myself, with two, was something generated by Martin Sanchez. He also, um, received a letter from Dwight Thomas, telling him that do not put Commissioner Henderson's name on any of those documents, because he's not on the board. And he was gonna do that too. So that's not a true statement. There was something set up by these folks up here. Well, I won't say all of it, but some of it, these people up here. Because for whatever reason, uh, they just want maybe to bash J.C. Henderson's name. But, uh, be careful, because if you're a true Christian like we claim we are, same hole you dig for somebody else, you might be the one falling in it. So, uh, only thing, what I'm saying is this, it's not right. You can say what you want to say about me, and I'll take it anytime, anyway. I'll step anywhere, we'll talk toe to toe with anybody. But stop taking out on these kids that this one need help. And all these folks, these little token gift, they're all giving folks ain't worth two cents. Ain't worth nothing. Because at the end of the day, these people need help, and nobody's doing nothing.
Thank you. Um, Anthony, I got a couple of questions myself. Um, is there, are y'all, is there a school or daycare operating there now?
Currently, right now, there's nothing. You're having fun at us. We have no, no funds.
So there's not a school operating there?
Well, right now, it's a daycare that rents, I mean, day to day, day to day basis, but it's, it's not set in stone. To keep income coming in, to pay the, to pay the upkeep of the facility?
But it's a daycare that, that utilizes the address?
Utilize, uh, not, 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 not in my understanding. They just actually rent out the facility. They can't utilize the address, just rent it out to operate, just get day to day.
Okay, so they, they have a lease, they rent?
You said it again?
They have a lease with you guys?
It was month, month to month.
Month to month, yeah, okay. When I finish, you can, when I finish, yeah. Uh, oh, you made me lose my train of thought. Uh. Yeah, yeah, so there is a daycare, there is a daycare or a school or whatever. It's a, it's a rated school. It's a quality rated school, right? It's not, it's not a quality rated school?
They're not over there.
They're not over there anymore? Let me, let me, let, let me make sure I do this the right way. Let me ask him. Is there, is there a school operating there?
There's not a school there, no, sir.
There's not, is there a daycare operating there?
It's not a daycare. I, I'm not sure what the operation is, but whatever they have there, it's month to month, and they just operate it.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Um, no, it's Commissioner Edwards. Then you, Commissioner Edwards. Okay, then it's, um, is Commissioner Sanders, then is you? Yeah, it's you.
I think we can sum all this up. Uh, Ms. Jackie, I think you've gotten there all the information of what every commissioner wants to see. If we can put that in a document, give that to Councilman Henderson. And what we, all the commissioners want to see, come back. Because it needs to be in writing. We're saying all these things to him, but it's not in writing. We have not given them anything in writing what we want to come back. We've said it many times, but it has not been given to them in writing. So if it's something that a commissioner wants to see, put it in writing on one document and provide it to the entity, so they can come back with the information, and then it settles it. If they didn't come back with the information you requested that was on a written document, that's on that entity. But if, once we put it in black and white, then it's settled. And if they're responsible for bringing back their information, we have to stop keep telling them what to do, and we haven't provided them with an official document. We haven't given them anything. Thank you.
I don't, I don't want to remind you guys, I'm coming to you now, Commissioner Henderson, I mean Mason, I'm coming to you next. But I want to remind you that, uh, we have a county manager who's over operations, so anything we need to do dealing with operations, need to go to our county manager.
But does the writing part come from the, the clerk? Cause she's here taking a note, so that's why I said Ms. Jackie, cause she's, I don't think, are you taking notes, Mr. Cooper? Or it's coming from our clerk, correct? You'll get that from our clerk. So, so that, that's why I stated Ms. Jackie. Thank you.
Commissioner Mason.
So question, guys. Daycare, school, whatever, why does it matter? Right now, you're not, you're not paying for a facility that you own. So i- i- if we, we don't rent it out, or if we don't do anything, it would just sit there. It's sitting there. So why, why does that matter to you personally?
To me personally?
Yeah, Chairman Baines.
Okay, so you, you, you want, um, funding for operations.
Uh-huh.
What, what time do the daycare operate?
So the question is, oh my God.
It's a question.
Daycare, school, or whatever, that's in a facility, why does it matter? We can't, we can't, we can't operate a program if we don't have any funds.
No, I'm asking you because if you're operating a daycare there, and they are there during the day, I'm asking you what time of day are they there? So, and you asked for funding. So you're gonna have two operations there?
No, so the point is, if it's month to month, right, wherever it is, if we get our funding back, we'll cease that immediately and get our, get our program back running.
I'm confused.
Okay, okay. Uh, Commissioner Mason, it's on you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, that was confusing to me, because there's, it's a daycare there, but then it's not a daycare there. Uh, okay. That's not, uh, 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 my question is, uh, on, on page twenty-two, um, under the payroll processing, number eight reads, "If the employee requests that his or her check be turned over to a third party, the request must be made in writing prior to distribution. If a part of an employee's paycheck must be sent to the Texas governor's office because of child support payments, such action requires that details be in writing and on file. Do you mind explaining to me, uh, if a part of an employee's paycheck must be sent to the Texas, when we're in Georgia, governor's office, because of a child support payment, such action requires that details be in writing, and why are we sending, uh, child support payments in Texas? So can you explain that to me?
So, Mr. Mason, that, that's just an example, right? So in reality, all, all we have is, all we have is a director and two assistants up under her. So therefore, this is just an example in case this happens, a scenario, but it's, in reality, it won't happen. We don't have a humongous staff. We just got three, three members.
So, so help me understand. You bring to us a Nelson Heights Community Services Incorporated procedures effective June first, twenty twenty-three, and so far, we have declared about four or five discrepancies with this procedures. There's no way that we can actually even input this as an official record, because there's several discrepancies. So I think that's where my issue comes in. As an elected official in this county, there's discrepancies in the audit that has not been resolved. There's discrepancies in the procedural man- manual that has been presented to us. There's too many discrepancies, and it's consistent. So how can we as a board make an intelligent business decision to continue this nonprofit in a county-owned facility that has discrepancies in the procedural manual that's presented to this board, as well as discrepancies in an audit that we don't even have an explanation for? We don't know if it's a daycare there, or if it isn't one there. It's like, we don't really have any concrete evidence and an assurance that we can put confidence in this nonprofit to really do what the objective was for the community. Uh, we're saying that we're doing certain things for the community. Uh, we, you say that there are programming, but I, I, there's just so many discrepancies. I'm trying to understand, why would you bring a document that was not accurate, but it was reviewed by legal?
It wasn't reviewed by legal.
Oh, it wasn't?
No, it's our accountant that we work with, tax accountant. So that, that, what you guys asked of us last was standard operation procedure. What you asking me, now, this is something totally different you asked me today. This is new to me from you, buddy. And so what I'm saying is, what you asked me last meeting is what we brought back to him. So this is what you have. You, you was quiet, you, you was quiet last meeting. You didn't say a word.
Okay, but I'm saying something now.
Right, so now guess what?
So what I'm saying is, and I have a choi- I have a right to either speak or not to speak
That's okay.
at any time, so that's not up for debate.
But you had your concerns, you should have mentioned last meeting.
But my questions are, today, you've br- brought a document.
Right.
Now, there has been several times on this board, when a document has been presented right before the meeting, there's an issue. But for some reason, this document was presented to us, not in advance. It was, it's sitting on my desk when I got here, and nobody has made an issue about rece- well, I can't say any. Receiving this document right now with a lot of discrepancies. So how can we have the confidence in the nonprofit with so many different discrepancies?
Well, sir, I mean, th- this is a document that I could always change. If, if, if you have concerns about certain things in here, you bring that to my attention. You now go back and make them changes that can fit, need, need your concerns that you have, and maybe it'll solve all your concerns you have.
I guess what I'm saying, I, I would think that that would be done prior to bringing it before the board.
You never brought it to my attention.
Well, I didn't create the document. So what I'm saying is, whoever created the document, it's called proofreading. You would go through and proofread and make sure that everything was accurate, accurate in the document before presenting it to a board.
But what, but what, but what did I tell you? I said, based on the last meeting, but the concerns you guys had, what I highlighted went through is what you guys asking me. That's why I read through certain things, not all of it, cause it don't apply to what you guys asked from the last meeting.
Thank you, sir. Um, Commissioner Cowell.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Um, this issue of proofreading and things like that, I mean, I look at things a lot differently than I did twenty-five years ago. But, uh, sometimes people make mistakes. And it's no, no need to get all upset about it.
I'm not upset.
Um, we, um, I'd ask you to go back, take another look at it, and then bring it back to the board at some point. Um, and once you get it done, once you proofread it, send it over to the county attorney, let them review it, and, um, make sure you're okay. The main thing I want to, uh, to emphasize is, de- in dealing with the money, appropriation is, you gotta make Harold and Brittany happy with your financial report. I don't care if it's an audit, I don't care if it's a financial statement. But there ought to be something that shows income and checks out. I mean, you got income coming in from school, uh, nurseries, you need to log that in. So, so that people know how much money you're bringing in. And it may not be that much, but, uh, it's just good financial, uh, accounting. Wouldn't you say so, Brittany? Okay. Now, it's, um, just, just bring in something, again, I say use QuickBooks, cause it's, to me, it's the best software out there for that. Um, and then bring her and Harold, y'all happy with that, they're happy with it, then you get your appropriation.
Yeah, so what are you asking me for again? What, what are you asking of me?
I'm asking for you to bring in a, um, income and.
Profit and loss?
Your profit and loss, you call it either one, income, profit and loss. Anything that shows your income coming in, your checks going out, and it's just like, on QuickBooks, it now do a summary for you. And just give it to Harold, give it to Brittany, let them take a look at it, and if they say it's, looks fine to us, then we move on, move forward with the appropriation.
Okay.
Okay, and any money that's in the past that you're due, we can hold that off to the side until, uh, use it for capital stuff and, or whatever we need to do. Okay?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
County attorney.
Um, something that I would like to recommend to the board is, we can review this procedures manual along with the audit. Um, work with Ms. Wyatt and Mr. Cooper and provide a memorandum for all the board members to consider, to review. Um, and that way, we can outline a plan of what to tell Mr. Henderson of, of the requirements of this board. That way, there's a written document with everything, um, including our legal analysis.
Do the board want to do that? Consider that? Okay, um, never mind. Um, Commissioner Henderson, you was first, then Commissioner Sanders.
Thank you. Um, well, my first question, Ms. Brittany, cause I think, um, C E O Henderson, he was, to the best of his ability, was trying to make sure that you had, I'll do it again, receive the copy of that which, uh, Commissioner Mason was talking about for you to look and review, because the last time we was here, Commissioner Cowell and, and I believe Commissioner Sanders and myself, we agreed with it, that whatever we did, whatever we gave, that it would have to become, we didn't have a, we didn't have a, um, a manager then that you would look at and give us a recommendation. So, uh, I guess my question is, how long have you had this seizure from Nelson Heights?
I received that document from Ms. Jackie, not from Anthony.
And I've had it probably a month, month and a half.
Yes, ma'am. So did you had opportunity to look at it?
I have reviewed it.
Okay, so, um, I was, and the reason why I think he sent you that document, because he wanted a recommendation from you as far as the document, which maybe he, he knew that. Can, can I talk, please, y'all? One person at a time, Mr. C. And, and so that you could give us, uh, some feedback to as far as, uh, what we need to do, or where we need to go, and when we know to get that, that back. And so the call came to me, the call, Anthony, to, to make sure he get off work. So he'd come here, so he could address some of these, uh, I guess, about the appropriations. And so I'm hoping that you, I guess, look at, and I guess, uh, do, they're gonna need to make a motion at some point, so doing what we have requested. So make sure to get done, cause if we don't, it'll be a whole lot of.
Ask the chairman on that.
Okay. So, so you're supposed to look at and give him feedback, which he never got, which, you know, I think, in fairness, he should have got. Secondly, was about Ms. Freeman in Nelson Heights. I live just a couple of doors down, so you know, naturally, I go over every day. Um, one night, we, my wife and I and my daughter was coming home and there was people in, in, out there in front of the building. And so we can't, I said, what's going on, y'all? You know, I, you know, I'm not a security guard, but I act like a security guard, cause I look at what's going on. And there was a child out there getting out of Ms. Freeman's van, who told me that the board members, and I didn't pay too much attention, and I, he didn't bring it up there, told her to come over there and pull him off CEO Henderson. And he felt sorry for us, he used to stay up for a month, cause y'all played being remodeling. And it ended up being about, I guess, a while. But the little boy, with two, Jim Williams said, well, he said he lives here. I said, I live here at this community center at nighttime. And I know the boy, it was Ms. Freeman's class, she was, she was a full prophet. After, uh, after school, I mean, after school daycare, whatever you want to call it. And he wanted to stay there for just a month. And, but he ended up staying up for longer than that. And I said, no. And the two guys said, yes, he do live here, cause he told us that. And the little boy got out their van, the van's still down there, got out their van with a blanket around him, with no shoes on, and the guy would tell him, say, we should have brought him for like three, somebody had jumped on and beat him up. So what I'm supposed to do? Just sit there, I know the guy, and he said he's sleeping in the building. Find out that the access, the key that we gave him, them was in the, their van, in a secret compartment that he owned up in there. So we immediately called the sheriff department. So, so my parent got going, trying to put all their business out in the street. Anybody wants to know, go to the office of the sheriff, they got a report on it, where the boy was being beaten by them folks. And that's the reason why they're not over there now. Because the director said she was not gonna allow nobody be, be, being a part of, with us over there, Nelson Heights kids and their kids, who may be in, may be in abuse. So the crime scene unit came over there, got with the other folk, talked to them, that should be a report generated of what they were doing. And we haven't seen them folks since then. They wouldn't come pick the stuff up. So if those are the folks that they sent over there to the community center, like what she told me, Ms. Freeman told me, then y'all sent folks over there who were abusing kids, in my opinion. Go to Sheriff Brown Crime Unit, Crime Scene Unit, cause they contacted the folks where they lived at. And there was a video generated where the kids, they had them fighting in front of their apartment. They were fighting in there. I got the, even got the video on my phone. Where they were fighting in front of the apartment, before they had them kids fighting, I could hear them, hear them saying, people talking in the background. And that wasn't right. So contact the sheriff department, anybody want to know the whole story about them folks they sent over there, over there trying to make a case against me. Start praying, cause we need prayer.
First, I want to speak life into you and thank you for doing what you're doing. Cause you a young man, you could be doing something else in this community. So I want to thank you for wanting even help the community, even being an elected official at your age, wanted to sow a seed and see something different from the community that you came from, that's normally for undeserved. So first, I want to say thank you for that, doing the right thing and letting the kids see you do the right thing in the community in Newton County. For number one. I do wish that some of this information was provided when we first discussed, cause all of this could have been done, dealt with. If we would have known that this document was given to our staff member a month and a half ago, then the commissioners could have reviewed it and it could have been dealt with, corrected, to be brought back before the board and reviewed. It was in the hands of the county a month ago, and the commissioners never saw it to today. The reason why, I didn't say much about this document being sent to the last minute, because it says Nelson Heights Community Center update. It's not a vote. We get documents that are for us to vote on and put in as a policy the day of, that has errors and this board has voted for it. That's a problem. There is nothing on this agenda that says discussion as far as a vote, it says an update. So those documents we receive are policies that we have put in place and received the day of and voted for, and had errors in it. So you can't compare those two. So this document has been in the hands of the county for an entire month and a half. And the commissioner's just seeing it today. That is a problem. Those errors could have been corrected. This debate that we had going back and forth, as commissioners going back and forth, could have been dealt with. The information the county attorney just gave us, that could have been said in the beginning. And this whole debate could have been over with and none of this discussion would have happened because we would have had a solution in the beginning. That's how that seed, that evil seed was planted. And I want to say thank you for all that you're doing, and hopefully, all that information that's needed is given to you to correct it because we do need great things in our community for our kids. And if you look at our educational rate in Newton County and in the state of Georgia, we should be helping all of our kids in this community. Thank you.
Citizen comment, there's opportunity to allow citizens to make comments. Um, you have three minutes to do so. You have three minutes to do so. Please state your name, your address for the record, please. You may comment this time.
Good afternoon. My name is Thelma Starr Nolly. And I just want to let you know, I am a member of the board, but I am not a family member of the Henderson family, okay? So get your facts straight when you talk about me. And first of all, you asked me two times, one time when you found out I was on the board. You asked me what I getting paid. I don't get a dime from the board, and I called Commissioner Henderson, asked him, was they paying the people on the board? And he told me no. So before you accuse me of doing something, you better stand up and straight right, cause you messing with the wrong somebody.
Anyone else? Anyone else? Anyone else? You have three minutes to do so, please. State your name, your address for the record, please.
Stephanie Lindsay Covington, Georgia. I'm gonna apologize in advance for stepping on anybody's toes. But to sit there and listen to this is heartbreaking. I'm not pointing you out, and I'm not dry snitching on anybody. The bottom line is this. We all know what's been going on in Nelson Heights Community Center for years. To sit up here and say that we want to do this for the kids is heartbreaking because y'all are not in that courtroom seeing those kids funneled to the prison system, out of your community. Your community, District Four. I have more people calling me from District Four about what I can do to help with drive-by shootings and everything else in that community. I have tried and tried and tried, and this goes to Commissioner Sanders. I hate to say, but you just came on board. You ain't, you wasn't here before twenty, twenty, no disrespect. So you don't know the plight that people in this community have gone through to help Nelson Heights Community Center. You don't know what people have done. I put my money where my mouth is all the time. And the bottom line is, we have kids that are being lost in that community. I am asking this board, and y'all know, I have sent y'all the information, three hundred thousand dollars went to Nelson Heights Community Center. Nonprofit, I can say, I sent it to you, 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 and I sent it to you. Three hundred thousand dollars. Where has that money gone to the kids? It came from the county. I'm not, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, we can sit up here all day long and talk about Mason. We can sit up here all day long and grandstand for the audience to get the clap. But the bottom line is this, I stand on what I say, and I know I'm speaking facts. The bottom line is, there's been a lot of money that's been given to Nelson Heights Community Center. There has not been a lot of programs coming out of Nelson Heights Community Center. I applaud Anthony Henderson for doing the best he can. I do. And I told him that repeatedly up until the last two years, when we've had this rifle, this, 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 this issue between black people in our community. This is a prime example of the modern-day lynching, but it ain't white people that are lynching us, it's our own. I'm not gonna stand against you. I want to work with you. I want to, and I told you that, and I said that, but I want it done right. What you got to do to fix this problem is not money, cause there's always gonna be a money problem with Nelson Heights Community Center, always. When it's in you, it's in you. What needs to be done is that Nelson Heights Community Center needs to be divested from the nonprofit. Give it back to the community so the community can get services. We sit up here and talk about senior services, but senior services could have been serviced right there at the Nelson Heights Community Center for that ARPA program. Nobody thought about that. I have given you programs that could be done at that community center, and I have not had e, and I have not had any response whatsoever. I'm not lying on you, J.C.
Hey, now we, hey, now we not gonna do no, we not doing back and forth.
What I've said is that the ARPA program could have been handled through Nelson Heights Community Center, and those seniors didn't have to travel far. Y'all gonna always be in cahoots with one another, and that's fine. But let's work for this community, for the kids.
Thank you, ma'am.
Stop talking about working for the kids and not doing it.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'm not lying. I'm not lying. Don't, don't.
We going home.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman, point of order. Well, you can't end the meeting unless the board end the meeting, Mr. Chairman. That's parteria procedure. The board has to end the meeting.
I tell you what, I just did it. I just ended it. Stay here.
Actually, I went to the class and took it.
Can the chairman end the meeting? Can the, how is the meeting supposed to be ended?
The board has to end the meeting.
What, I didn't know meeting?
The board has to end the meeting.
I'm calling for adjournment. Yeah, I'm calling for adjournment. Can I get a second?
From the attorney sitting at the seat, how can we end the meeting?
It's been motion, it's been motioned by Commissioner Edwards, it's been seconded by Commissioner Mason. And I'm calling for, I'm calling for the vote. Who made the motion? I'm calling for the vote. All in favor? We stand adjourned. Thank you.